Bothell City Council is now in session. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. All council, we'll call all council members are present except for Mayor Freed who's absent and excused, but he will be joining us for Agenda Bill 1535, Boards and Commissions. He'll be joining us by phone. So that being said, are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Councilmember Sandberg.
I wanted to pull some items from the consent agenda and I apologize at the number. Usually I get my questions into staff early, but I was only able to get my questions in this morning and so I expect that staff probably has the answers to the brief question. So I would like to pull the March 17th meeting minutes, Agenda Bill 15032, approval of the inter-local agreement with Clallum County, 15033 regarding the distribution easement, and 15034, the acquisition of the closed-circuit TV utility inspection system.
All right. We have five minutes dedicated to this, to consent, so about how much more time do you anticipate?
The questions are few, so if staff is ready to answer them, I think an additional five minutes should be fine.
All right. So that'll push all of our other agenda items back five minutes then. So we'll add five minutes. That's all right with the rest of council. Okay. I don't have a projected agenda in front of me, so are there any items for a projected agenda? Oh, there we go. Two of them now. Councilmember Sandberg.
I had a question about one of the items. On an old projected agenda, we were scheduled, it was predicted that we would be hearing the approval of the PSA for construction services for the Bothell Everett Highway 228 intersection improvements. And so back in February, I guess this was, we were anticipating that we would be hearing that tonight. And so I'm wondering, when will we, when is that coming to council? And why the delay? And if there is a significant delay, will we still be able to complete that project within this construction season?
Councilmember, it's been rescheduled to June 2nd.
And is there a reason for the delay from April to June?
I don't recall why it was delayed. I would anticipate it was probably a right-of-way issue.
And then, will we still be able to complete that project within the construction season, given that we won't be approving that contract until June?
We should be able to complete it still by next year, I would say. So there's not a whole lot of groundwork that needs to be done, so I wouldn't anticipate it'll put us off too long.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And then I have one other item for the projected agenda.
Okay.
So I would like to add a discussion about the recent issue regarding the graffiti being sprayed at Skyview Junior High and at the local Hindu temple. I envision a meeting between many partners, like the North Shore School District, the cities of Kenmore, Bothell, and Woodinville, and members of multiple faiths, or sort of like an interfaith meeting where we can discuss issues surrounding these events, including some events that happened at the ICOB offices last year. I sent an email to the city manager and I'm confident that the police department has done a thorough investigation and the investigation is ongoing. And in your email, you say the police department does not believe there is a culture of hate or intolerance at the school or schools in the area. But I still think it's an opportunity for us to engage with our community, have a discussion about this, as opposed to just saying that it was an isolated incident and no need to discuss that further. So I was hoping that as a council, we could ask the city manager or city staff to engage in a dialogue with the entities that I mentioned and see if we can have an informal meeting to discuss what happened and what our community can do moving forward and what are some expectations of those faith communities and have an open conversation about that.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Spivey. I had an opportunity to reach out following the incident at the Hindu temple to the head of the Hindu temple, who's actually a personal friend and somebody I've known for many, many years, and had a chance to talk with him about the community's response, as well as how the temple community was dealing with it. He specifically asked me to thank the Bothell police and how they responded, as well as the Snoimish County Sheriff's Department and how they responded to the incident. They've received support from across the Bothell community. They've received support from the governor of the state of Washington. And I would be comfortable reaching out to them and asking what would be a forum that they would feel the most comfortable with, whether it would be having the city, a member of the city council, or to come and talk to the temple, or whether they would like to participate in a larger meeting. I don't know if they would or wouldn't, but I think that might be a more appropriate way to interface with them, rather than sort of announcing a public meeting with multiple entities and suggesting that they come to that before asking if that's something that they're comfortable with or that they'd like to have in the first place. So that would be my suggestion.
Councilmember Evans.
Usually we have a meeting with, a joint meeting with the cities and the school district, and maybe that might be a venue to start with, at least. Certainly invite those people to that. And every, all the cities would be there, the school district potentially, and all of them. So that might be an opportunity for a meeting like that.
City manager, do we have a, one of those joint meetings on the horizon that you know of?
We don't have anything scheduled yet, but they would typically occur towards the end of the year.
Maybe between councilmember Lamb reaching out to the Hindu temple to see their interest, maybe if, with the consensus of council, if the city manager could reach out a little bit to the other municipalities and the school district to see about their interest, or at least putting it in our joint meeting on the agenda there. Would that, would everybody be agreeable with that? So it looks like everybody's agreeable with just reaching out about the interest in doing it, or at least putting it on the agenda for the joint meeting. So, anything else on the projected agenda? No? All right. I was a bit remiss in not pointing out that we do have an executive session tonight to discuss, it was contract negotiations, correct? Okay. All right. This brings us to our visitors section. During this portion of the meeting is your opportunity to speak to council on items that are not scheduled for public testimony. If you do have a question of council, please understand that we may not have the answer for you, but we will work with staff to get you the answer. Everybody is scheduled, has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. Please be courteous to the other members in the audience that may wish to speak and try to limit your comments to three minutes. That being said, we do at times with, you know, permission in advance, grant extra time if the council agrees as a whole. So that being said, first up, we have Alan Tagle. We have your address. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Alan, my name's Alan Tagle.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is the green light on on your microphone there?
It is.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I think that's better.
There.
Okay. Well, good evening, council. I wanted to, I wanted to come by and just spend a few minutes and put my face before yours. My name is Alan Tagle and I own the Beehive Espresso on Bothell Way on 177th, just a few blocks from here. Last month, four members came before you and essentially, you know, spoke and about their concerns about my particular business. I know that you, I wanted to basically speak to that and I wanted to let you guys know a little bit about our business in a couple of minutes. The Beehive Espresso has been operating here in Bothell for over six years, and I think that that's important because I wanted to just let you guys know that in all that time, we've never had any issues in regards to any illegal activity or any kind of, anything that basically has brought the Beehive Espresso into court. I personally take offense because I do a very, I spend a lot of time to make sure that the coffee shop there is ran in a way that is worthy of the city that it sits in, which is Bothell. I don't know if some of you are aware, but for a couple of years, the Beehive Espresso, the city was actually my landlord. So we've worked for many years with the city. We've worked for many years with the police department. And the way that we are today is essentially a result of open communication and transparency between my company and the different parts of the city. So when people come up here and they make allegations and they give this doomsday scenarios, it's been six and a half years and the sky hasn't fallen here in the city of Bothell. And I, and most of you have been on the council for that long, or longer, and during that time, I adventure to say that in six and a half years, the city has only gone stronger. The Beehive Espresso employs young people, and that's something that we should be proud of anyhow. And I just want to basically be, put myself forth as a resource. I have been involved in the industry for many, many years. I was involved when the county council put together the ordinance in 2009 that essentially shapes adult entertainment, lewd behavior, lewd conduct within multiple cities. So I'm very familiar with the process, and if you guys have any questions, I just wanted to put myself forth, that you guys can ask of me anything you like, and there's always an open line of communication. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Would you entertain a question?
Yeah, of course.
Councilmember Evans.
So is the Beehive Espresso, is that the only one that you own in the city of Bothell?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I own two, or three other stores, and I own one in the city of Admins. We've operated for close to six years there. I own a regular coffee shop, and I say regular in the traditional dress code, in Marysville. And then I also, I own another Beehive Espresso in the city of Linwood.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you. So we had a public safety committee meeting, I think, last week, and I believe one of your employees came to that meeting. I could be mistaken, or it could be a different.
You're right.
Okay.
I wasn't aware because the first, it first came to my attention when I go rate this, okay, so I was actually, just so you know where I'm coming from, I was actually a candidate for the state legislature. And so I am very respectful of state and city government and state laws. My father was a police officer, so I'm not here to break any laws. And because of that, I run my business a certain way, which is counter to maybe what the industry shows out there in cities like Everett and cities that maybe are larger and don't have the kind of handle that we do. In regards to your public safety meeting, I didn't, I couldn't attend because I found out about it the day of. I know that you guys put out a notice usually a couple of days before, but I, one of my employees was able to attend. She had a particular interest in going because one of the members who came before you last month actually went to our place of business and essentially assaulted her at the coffee shop. And we sent report of that to the police department. So you have to kind of sometimes take those who are bringing forth allegations and question the motives. I mean, clearly, my motive is biased in the fact that I own the business, right? I'm being be open about that. This particular person who spoke last month went to our business forcefully, held the windows open, screamed at the employee. There's a whole statement that she actually submitted to the Bothell Police Department in regards to this. And, you know, that's the greatest attack on public safety, in my opinion, than the non-incident that have happened in six and a half years up the road, so.
So the question I had, and I don't fault you for not showing up at the meeting, that's not, I don't know what the, I mean, I take it you're worried that you didn't have notice of it. The question I had was, at that meeting, it was, the idea was raised of having some sort of, I guess, public notice or something like that before people pull up, that there's been a number of times that people have reported, and I don't know if that's true or untrue, or sort of unsuspecting people pulling them to.
I'm so glad you brought that up. Years ago, we had this discussion where basically, okay, so it was actually expressed to me to not put up signage that warned the street that we were a bikini barista coffee shop. And the reason was because that did not, at the time, it did not seem that the city wanted an advertisement of this business. And so, trust me, it's better for my business to have advertisement that says, "Coffee with bikini baristas here." But that does not look good for the city. And I've, it's the same issue with the tent. If you drive by there, you see that the windows tinted. It is better for my business not to have the tent. And so when we don't have the tent, the complaints roll in. I drove by and I saw a person naked. No, they were wearing a bikini. So they were naked. And, but when I do put the tent, it's, what are they hiding? Why do they tint their window? But I'm basically acting at the request of the city, and that's why I'm here, because I've essentially done in six and a half years what you guys have asked through meetings that we've had with, with city attorney and police department, and you can maybe refer to them about those meetings, because they're all documented. We have this issue every time the weather gets nice and the windows start to crack and the doors start to open, and we can no longer hide in the box, right? And we start to open it up, and then people go, "Oh, what's going on there?" And the complaints roll in. And if you go back to your complaints, you'll actually see a pattern. It's the same people complaining. It's the same people complaining, and it's, they all come from the same ideology. So that's all, that's all I have to say to that.
So I guess just like a practical question on that, I mean, as the owner of the business, is it, is it a common occurrence that people come through and don't know that they're coming to a bikini barista stand?
It depends if there's signage or not. I tried to put up signage when we first made the transfer from, we used to be next to the McDonald's where, originally, where the new road is now.
Yeah.
And when we moved over, I tried to, I put in requests for signage, but code compliance did not want that signage to go in, so that never happened.
So there's no signage now, and I guess my question to you.
Besides Beehive Espresso.
Besides Beehive Espresso. So I guess my question to you is, does it happen fairly often that people come through expecting a non-bikini experience, or?
We have, we have hundreds of people that come through there every day, all who live here in Bothell, because it's all local Bothell people. And we have hundreds of people that go there, and I adventure to say maybe between the 200 to 300 people that show up in a day, maybe under five incidents a day, where somebody shows up and it's, "Oh, I didn't know this was here." Half the people don't care, to be honest with you. This is 2015. Nobody cares if they see a woman in a bikini, but it's usually the, like, the religious, you know, person that has more of an issue with it, or somebody that maybe comes in with their kids. I would be open to, I, you know, in, I would be open to any kind of signage you guys would want up. That's basically, I'd be happy to, "Do you guys want me to put up a fence? I'll put up a fence." But it just, there's a pro and a con to everything, so.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. And so you would say like maybe at the most, like five a day would come through and would have.
Like one and a half percent.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Hugh Moog. We have your address. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to address council this evening. My name's Hugh Moog, and I've lived at 11100 Northeast 174th Street in Bothell for over 20 years now. I'm also very proud to represent the Bothell Professional Firefighters and the North Sound Professional Firefighters. As most of you are aware, at the last meeting, ex-councilmember Sandy Gwynn made several comments regarding Bothell firefighters being paid extravagantly. I would like to address this erroneous accusation. First off, I'd like to remind council that in an effort to assist our city deal with the negative impacts of the housing recession, and in support of the current council's long-term vision for revitalized downtown, we took a 3.4% pay cut in our last contract. This cut saved the city close to a half a million dollars. That money was used to keep the city's service delivery systems in place throughout this downturn. Secondly, the spreadsheet placed in front of you showed an amount of money that honestly I wished I earned, but I clearly don't. I included, it included insurance, L&amp;I payments, and every other cost that are not reflected in the salary that we take home. This number is clearly available without asking for city council members' help. It's indeed, I believe, on our city's website, and it's a matter of record. I brought a copy of my pay stub that clearly shows that I make about $40 an hour. I make an additional dollar something for having a bachelor's degree in public administration and another degree in fire command. I put up, I get about two extra dollars an hour for working for the city for over 20 years, 20 years of seniority. That's less than $44 an hour. Most people, I think, would agree that that's not extravagant. We do work a 50-hour work week, which actually saves the city money, since firefighters have an exemption to the federal overtime law, and it permits the city to not pay us overtime for these extra 10 hours a week. Thirdly, I'd like to point out that when you put a number on a screen that is not accurate of our actual salary, and in addition, use numbers that represent the highest-paid lieutenant or the highest-paid firefighter, it compounds that inaccuracy. Our highest-paid lieutenant last year is a nationally-recognized expert in technical rescue. He was deployed as part of a national resource to OSO for weeks on end, where he did horrific work, and he rarely saw his family. The overtime he made was fully paid by the federal government, not the citizens of Bothell. We are very proud of him, and you should be as well. Our highest-paid firefighter is an engine boss on a state-certified wildland team, and again, he was deployed for weeks on end, stretching into months, last summer, helping the Washingtonians east of the mountains deal with a horrific fire season. Indeed, the worst fire season we've had in over, I believe, in history. I'd ask for unanimous consent to continue my comments.
Everybody okay with that?
I don't have an objection.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please continue.
Again, these costs were more than fully reimbursed by the state government, not Bothell's taxpayers. I would hope that in the future, Ms. Gwynn would ask for some context before she puts information in front of elected officials, and indeed, the whole city of Bothell via closed-circuit TV. Information that's clearly misleading, and in addition, it's counter to her argument, which, near as I can tell, was against the regional fire authority or the RFA. This RFA was shown in the independent consultant's report. It'll actually assist in curbing overtime, allowing for additional cost savings and administrative costs, one chief instead of three, less battalion chief positions needed, economies of scale in almost all purchasing, and better sighting of stations, allowing faster response times for the same cost. A regionalized response plan that recognizes that no jurisdiction currently can fight a fire without help from outside jurisdictions. Fireground operations will be greatly facilitated when we have a common training regime, operating procedures, and leadership. I have a challenge to lay out to everyone here and at home. Ask your friends or relatives that are firefighters from whatever jurisdiction, Seattle, Snow One, Redmond, Bellevue, wherever. Ask them what they think about regionalization of the fire service. Almost to a firefighter, they'll respond, just as Jesse Sears did several weeks ago when he was asked off the cuff, "Is regionalization good for everyone?" And he responded with a resounding yes. We all know that this is a great process, and it will lead to better service. Regionalization is good for everyone. Firefighters get a safer system with more boots on the ground. Citizens get cost savings and economies of scale that can lead to either lower taxes or increased services. And I think, very importantly, the true cost of the system is spread fairly across the region. In the RFA, every citizen will pay the exact same rate for fire protection, whether they live in Bothell, Snow Ten, Woodinville, or Kenmore. It's amazing to me that we don't already have a regionalized system. Everyone knows how well it'll work. Just look at our regionalized paramedic program with King County Medic One. Just like our Seahawks, in every conversation, it's mentioned as amongst the best in the world. It's hard to build a regional system because everyone other than citizens has to give up some stuff. Local politicians give up some control, chiefs and leaders give up some promotional opportunities, and it's hard to work to create and lead a new organization. Unions give up working under contracts we understand, and we'll have to work in new stations with new people. Change is a scary thing, probably scarier than fighting a house fire. But we are at a place where we can make this happen. We have courageous leadership here on the council and amongst the elected leaders in our partner jurisdictions. We have a courageous leadership team amongst our fire officers, who have worked tirelessly to bring us this far. With no extra compensation, they've taken on the leadership of two separate organizations to show the benefits of this cooperation. We also have three unions that represent over 150 firefighters that are willing to take the risk to accomplish this goal. We feel like we can better serve the citizens we are sworn to protect with a regionalized system. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the courage that you've displayed getting us this far, and we look forward to working with you to bring the RFA to fruition. Thanks.
Would you entertain a question?
I certainly would.
Councilmember Sandberg.
You provided a lot of information in your letter. I was wondering if you would be willing to submit it to the city clerk?
I certainly would, yeah.
Thank you.
Will you accept it with scribbles on it?
Thank you. Next, I have Judith Carpenter. We have your address. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Judith Carpenter. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have two short topics to speak to the council about. When the citizens requested an independent investigation, I envisioned it to be truly independent from the city. I now understand that the investigation is being performed by an attorney hired by the Washington City's Insurance Authority. In all respects, the WCIA is an insurance pool the city of Bothell is a member of. This is not my idea of an independent investigation. I would also hope that there would be some citizen oversight. As the city of Bothell is comprised of a group of citizens, and as citizens, we have elected the mayor and the city council to represent us, we should be entitled to our oversight into the investigation. We have inquired a number of times about the council's request for a copy of the sales agreement for the back nine. To this date, we have heard nothing. I hope that tonight's meeting will shed some light on this request. I am sorely disappointed that the city passed up on the offer for the back nine. To quote a phrase from Joni Mitchell's Big Yellow Taxi, "They paved over paradise and put up a parking lot." In this case, the greenway bordering the Sammamish River is going to be developed with more houses to the detriment of the wildlife, since most of the property to the south has already been developed or is in the process thereof. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Next up, I have Dennis, is it Skofstad?
Yes.
We have your address. Please state your name for the record.
I am Dennis Skofstad. Bothell proposed a bond issue to purchase the Wayne Golf Course in 1989, and again in 1990. Subsequently, Bothell, together with King County, bought a view easement on the front line of the golf course in 1996. The Bothell 2000 Parks and Open Space Action Plan called for Bothell to develop a strategy for purchasing in total or in part the Wayne Golf Course. This goal of acquiring the Wayne Golf Course continued in the 2004 Bothell Comprehensive Plan, and again in 2008 on page 59, which lists the Wayne Golf Course back nine acquisition as a priority. as a priority. The 2011 Bothell Shoreline Analysis stated the acquisition of the Wayne Golf Course as a goal. The 2014 Parks Action Plan again stated the goal to acquire the Wayne Golf Course just a month after the Bothell City Council met over the Richards November 2013 offer to the city of the back nine. The city council gave no notice of the 2013 offer to the public or to the Bothell Parks and Recreation Department. The city took no action on the offer and has no record of discussions or the decision. During a December 2014 planning meeting, the commissioners heard a proposal to rezone the four-acre golf clubhouse area for seventy-six townhouses, a three-story townhouse barrier approximately eight hundred feet long between the Ninety-Sixth Avenue and the View corridor, which Bothell and King County bought for eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-six During this meeting, city officials acknowledged for the first time publicly that the back nine was for sale, but did not acknowledge the city had been offered the opportunity to buy the back nine a year earlier. That information surfaced only as a result of a Freedom of Information Inquiry. The actions of the Bothell City Council, Community Development Department, and the city manager in withholding this information from the public and the Bothell Parks Department stands in sharp contrast to stated Bothell goals of preserving the property as open space. Mayor Freed's March 4th statement that he learned about the city's interest on the back nine March 3rd is not credible. The mayor is not serving the interests of the community. I call on him to resign from the city council.
If I could just make a general request to anybody who's providing testimony, if you're reading a prepared statement, it would be really helpful if you submitted that to the clerk's office, I mean, to the clerk right here. Just because it's hard to capture everything that you said, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, that brings us to the end of our sign-up sheets. Is there anybody else that would like to speak before council? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Moritz, 1690115th Avenue Northeast in Bothell. I'm here to speak about the Transportation Benefit District that you're going to be considering, I guess, potentially later tonight. I wonder how many registered vehicles there are in the city. Do we know that? It was not in the agenda bill. Okay, we have forty thousand people, so maybe forty thousand vehicles. I counted the vehicles on my street, and said, "Oh, my God, it's about one per person." And the next question is, could this money be used, could the income from this, the yearly income, be used to support a bond? Do we know?
I personally don't know. I have to refer to Director Shakman.
Mayor, we could answer all the questions once the speaker's done presenting this information. It might be more efficient.
Sure, thank you.
One of the things I definitely think, I mean, it's well documented, you have your own pavement study here that was done recently, the city streets that exist today are in terrible repair. My hope would be that the money that's raised from this Transportation Benefit District, if we proceed with it, be used for that purpose, to fix the streets we have, maintenance, not to build new streets. We got to deal with the failing streets we have now, and it's well documented that the worse they get, the more, much more expensive it becomes. I would ask also, I did check the RCW and the information on your agenda bill, it appears to me that the city council has the opportunity to put this to a vote of the people, whether or not to actually do this, whether advisory or mandatory. I would ask you to do that. Make the case to the people before you impose what could be a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and forty, or a hundred and sixty dollar a year additional cost to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamb.
So I guess I'd invite staff if they could answer those questions. And also, my understanding is that we, without a vote of the people, you can't submit more than twenty dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'd ask either Public Works Director or the Finance Director to respond to the speaker's other two questions if we have that information.
Why don't we let the Director Shakman respond here quickly? Or is it germane to that?
It is. Well, we have this item on the agenda tonight, and hopefully, many of the questions that were asked have been asked by the council or others, so there are answers to those questions. And there will be a pretty significant presentation by staff tonight to go over this, which I think will answer your questions, Bill, and many other questions that come up. So we can either take them now, or to me, if we could discuss it as a whole, I think that would be more beneficial for everybody, but either way is fine. But there will be a very detailed discussion on this, which I think will answer the majority of your questions and any others, so.
I was hoping to see that in the agenda bill. That's why I was thinking.
It's on the agenda as a study session item, so that will be a general discussion of the presentation by the staff of what they've found about a Transportation Benefit District, and then we'll go from there. So if that's in general, I guess I would recommend that we discuss that all in one point, and so we get everything together.
Listen, I'd like to address that. Is council comfortable with just addressing all this? Okay. Councilmember Sandberg.
And we're going to be hearing the Transportation Benefit District in a public hearing, so when that agenda item comes forward, I would expect that staff would incorporate all of the questions from the public and questions from council tonight. So that would be, there would be more complete information in the next agenda bill when this is scheduled as a public hearing. And I believe that's, is that, it's not next week, is it?
No, it's in April, April 21st would be the public hearing on the TBD. So, any other comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moritz, for your comments. Anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patty Bellacy. I live at 2614242nd Street, Southeast in Bothell. I'm here to talk to you about the Regional Fire Authority. I recently noticed that my property taxes went up ten percent this last year, and it is my understanding that the Regional Fire Authority tax and benefit charge fee that is proposed will add to that. My biggest question to you is how are you going to return our money to us if you are no longer paying for fire department-related expenses? I assume that since this topic has been around for a while, you have discussed how you would handle it if a fire district, Fire Authority district is created. I also have a comment regarding our representation on the planning committee for this issue, and this has nothing to do with individuals. I believe there are three city council representatives on this committee. Two out of the three are currently or were previously employed by a fire department. I do not know whether or not these two people are biased toward the fire department. The perception is that they would be. And if you have attended any classes on ethics, you know the perception is important to consider. One person related to the fire department would be helpful. Two makes it look like a stacked deck. By the way, I recently heard a rumor that a council member told the fire department they could go out and get fifteen percent of voters to sign a petition so that the RFA could bypass voters and go straight to the council for approval. Hopefully, that is not true. But since the majority of the council found a way to avoid having the citizens of Bothell vote on whether or not they wanted a fifty-million-dollar city hall, it wouldn't surprise me. I strongly urge you to allow the citizens of Bothell to have an advisory vote regarding the Regional Fire Authority.
Councilmember Evans.
I thank the speaker for those comments, and just so that the speaker's aware and the rest of the public and the citizens as a whole, this will be discussed in detail next week in our study session, where I think there will be a lot of questions answered, a lot of information given, maybe more questions raised. So if you're interested, you're more than welcome to attend that study session. That will be next week, and I serve on that committee, so I'll be involved in that discussion along with the other council members and things, but there will be, no decisions have been made one way or another, but all of that, as much information as we've got to date, will be presented at that meeting next Tuesday. I would encourage you to attend and listen in to hopefully give you some idea of what's going on.
Ma'am, could you come back to the microphone, please?
Well, I, we don't, I don't, there's a lot of information, Ms. Bellacy, that will be discussed, and whether or not we have that answer that night, or whether we continue to get more information, I don't know, but eventually, that question will certainly be addressed, and we'll look at it.
My concern is that I don't want to pay twice.
Neither do I.
That's one of the concerns.
Thank you.
So the city, once they get our money, usually doesn't, don't give it back. So that's, I'd like to know how the city plans on not charging us for fire department that they're no longer responsible for, if the fire district authority or whatever it's called goes forward.
Councilmember Sandberg.
I also wanted to point out to members of the public who may be interested that the consultant's final report is available on the website, so that is a good document to read and to start reading now, because it's kind of long, and then you can, you know, put yourself to sleep at night while reading it. But that provides a lot of information.
Councilmember Agnew.
And Mrs. Speaker, rest assured, nothing will be done without a vote of the citizens. Nothing will be done without a vote of the citizens. All the citizens in Bothell, Woodinville, North Shore, and Snow Ten.
We're only a third of that.
Probably left.
We're not going to have a dialogue between the audience and the dais, please. Councilmember Lamb.
So I just wanted to say that, you know, everybody on council voted for and selected the three representatives on this committee, and I think it's important for the public to understand that the committee itself doesn't, those three representatives don't make any decisions. They're bringing, they represented the city of Bothell on that committee, as Councilor Evans, who's on that committee, indicated, nothing will happen without a vote of the Bothell City Council and every member of the Bothell City Council. I appreciate the service, both on this committee and off this committee, of the members of that committee, and I have every expectation that when it comes back, we'll have a full and robust discussion that'll include the public and include every single member of this council. But everybody on council was supportive of Councilor Agnew, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Spivey, and Councilor Evans being appointed to this commission.
City manager has pointed out to me that the final study's not on the website. Is there a way that we could get that posted?
I didn't realize that it wasn't on the website. I'd have to check with the fire chief to find out why it's not on the website.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg pointed it out to me.
The draft is there, but I don't see the final.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to make comment? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Sandy Alto. You have my address. I had some great conversations this week with Joe Beck this morning and with David Boyd, and one thing that I wanted to put forth to council that I noticed that some other cities have that we don't have, especially given current events of the last month over Wayne Golf Course, is that other cities have something called neighborhood services, where there is a role in the city that formulates councils among different neighborhoods and citizens that provides a better handshake between the citizens of Bothell, or the citizens of a specific city and that city. So I've just started to research this, and I realized after speaking with Joe this morning that there's a lot of people in the city of Bothell that assume things work a certain way, and we have experts in the city that actually know how things work, and that can cause a lot of conflict and confusion. So I'm hoping that if it's possible to fund a neighborhood services role, that the city will consider it.
I think that's something that we could, maybe working with you, look into further.
You really got to work with me?
But city manager, is there a way that we can maybe do a little research on this and possibly bring this back later on to?
Well, I guess I would ask the speaker if she has a specific budget proposal to submit that to you or to submit that to the staff, and then certainly we can schedule that for a discussion. But at this point, that's a pretty broad scope.
Right.
To carry a discussion about neighborhood services or neighborhood councils, which is really what Kirkland is accustomed to performing, and maybe some others too, but that's really, I think, what the speaker is probably referring to, not having talked to her about this topic based on their commentary today.
And I know Bellevue does have a few neighborhood councils also.
Right. So, yeah, and I, you know, I did tell Joe this morning that if I was upset about anything, it's mostly at myself for having ignored what's been going on, you know, how the city has actually worked in the last decade, since I last worked with council. So I would like to bring the consensus back and get the city back on track and be helpful in that regard, and of course, save Wayne Golf Course. But I need to research this more, and I'm starting to within the community. We do actually have an expert from California who is on a community page for Bothell, and she actually served in that role. So it's, of course, going to take me some time to figure that out, but I do want to offer doing some research on that and then asking the city manager to kind of help us devise whether that's something the city can afford.
I guess I would suggest that once you have the scope narrowed down, then come back to us, and we can address it at that point.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, come on up and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Pat Pierce. I think you have my address as well. If you don't let me know, I'm glad to have provided. I'd just like to follow up on what Sandy said. I'm aware of citizen councils and so forth and how they work, but there's also another program you might want to look at that allows that contact and pass-through between the citizens and the city government and so forth, and that's an ombudsman who can do that networking between the various communities. And then that person serves the whole community, so you don't have little islands of dispute. So, my addition to that.
Thank you, Pat. Is there anybody else that would like to address council? Yes, ma'am. Please come up and state your name.
Unlike a lot of the previous, you don't know me because I'm a new Bothell person, not new to the area, but you took us in. We were unincorporated King County and paid really, really high rates on our taxes, and the first bill we got after we were officially done, but I realized that King County had had their last jab at us. When we got our bill this year, it dropped over a grand on our property taxes, so I was really happy. I'm not so happy now. I would like to dare to ask all of you on the council, if any of you are a signer on the contract for the back nine, and you have not divulged it, because that is a clear conflict of interest. And if in the future, we find that any one of you is on that piece of paper, whoa betide you. You won't ever sit on that chair again. And it's just impossible that anybody could sit here and not understand a very simple, you don't do things behind people, because they will find out. So I don't know. I don't think anybody here does. You all do. So clean up your act and make sure it is clean, and go forth. I'm against, I'm personally against, and everybody on that hill is against Wayne Golf Course being turned into condos or peeling off Paradise. That is a beautiful park we have. People, I know, I have friends- have. People, I know, I have friends who bike, I don't do it, but they bike from Burt Gilman all the way across here. And it's not fit to be paved. So, anyway, that's all I had. Oh, my address is 1561811th Avenue Northeast, Bothell, Washington, 98011. And my name is Estelle Isaacs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. In the, is it a switcher?
Yeah.
Go Cougs.
I like all Hollywood, so.
Did you announce the ring?
I'm not advertising, so.
You should.
So my name's Lynn Anderson. And you guys have all heard from me this week. I've sent you emails. And I wasn't going to speak because I don't know how to fix what's going on. But I feel like I need to get up and speak. I'm just, what's happening in this council, I think it's perception and appearance. I don't think that you guys have broken any laws. But what I've witnessed over the last four months just breaks my heart. How you guys get along with each other. I believe I've witnessed bullying on certain members of the council. And I've actually spoken to individual people about that. It's hard to watch. It is, as I drive through Bothell now, I feel stressed. And I've lived here for three years. I love this place. And I want to be a part of the solution. I think it's great that we have people, I think you need to have more citizen oversight. I really do. We love Bothell. And it's not just about the Wayne Golf Course anymore, to me. I believe we need to save that land. I need to, I think we need to have more open spaces. We're over, and we're rezoning everything. All homes are coming close together. It's more than the Wayne Golf Course. It's about how you all interact with each other. I believe tonight there's going to be another talk about the planning commission, and you guys are going to vote. And it's going to be a majority against, you know, minority, again. And I'm concerned about this planning commission vote that's coming up. And I think it's appearance. I don't know. I've tried to get the records, to hear the interviews. And I'm going to get the $6 CD because it was just in audio. I don't know who is right and who is wrong because there's such a divide. Every time you guys vote, it's a majority against them. And I actually agree with some of the things, I'm questioned, the things that some of the council members question, I agree with. I just want to know everything. But it's just this fight every time. And it's hard to watch. It's really hard to watch. It's not anything that I expected. When I started coming to these meetings, I really thought that we were all going to work together, that we were going to compromise. And I haven't seen any compromise. And, you know, I've been reaching out, I've been trying because I want to be a part of the solution. I don't want to be a part of the problem. I've purposely just right now reached out to people in emails. I've talked to some people. I'm just sad. I'm very sad of the state of affairs of when I come to these meetings and watch people being treated poorly. I haven't seen it tonight, and I appreciate that, though the meeting has just begun. And I hope that it doesn't because I'm, actually, that's something I'm going to, I'm passionate about people treating each other with respect. You don't have to agree. I don't expect us to agree. But I expect us to treat each other fairly and nicely. And I appreciate Mr. Beck responding quickly to my emails. And I still have to research some of that. But I'm concerned about your vote tonight. It's another four to two or five to two. And I just want to add one other thing. On March 10, there was a vote that was called. And it was, it was four to two. But one member hadn't voted. And it's assumed that it was four to two. And because the mayor believed that this group believed one way, and that member finally said, hey, I didn't even vote. And so I just want us to maybe inform the public a little bit more about your connections because I don't see you guys working together. I really don't. And it's hard to come to these meetings sometimes. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address council tonight? Ms. Mogue, you've addressed once. Is there anybody else that would like to? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is James McNeil. I'm at 16314 Bahola Drive. I am a member of One Bothell. You all know me. We've been in front of you guys many, many times. It's approaching about a month since we've seen some of you and spoken to some of you. But I wanted to kind of give you a little bit of an update on where we are with things. Hearing tonight the community speak to you guys, there's definitely a need and a desire to keep this land. And we are doing everything possible to make this happen. We have been to Olympia several times now. We have letters going to legislators from almost 10 to 15 different districts. Those legislators are reaching back to us. We have community support from Kenmore, Woodinville, Redmond, Issaquah, Duval, Carnation. All cities are responding to us and lending their support in what we're trying to do here. So, speaking of the funding issue, we are, we're making leaps and bounds. We have, we're in the capital budget. We know that. You guys have requested that. We've been reaching out to them on a regular basis. And we know that we are at least in there. We hope to have an answer from that within the next couple of weeks. We also know that the city has applied for CFT funding, I believe for 1.2 million on the, on the front nine. We also have applied for CFT funding to see if we can help as well. We are having our meeting. I guess you guys are meeting tomorrow. We'll be meeting as well tomorrow. So I want, I want you guys to know that we're working very hard. We're not going to give up on this process. We want to make sure that you guys fully know where we're at, at all times. We are also very proud to be able to announce that we have met with the Richards family. We met with them this last week. And the meeting went very well. And I want the community to know that the Richards want to save the land for us, period. And I believe that you're going to find that what we're doing right now, moving things forward, trying to find the funding, if given that opportunity back in 2013, we would have been in the funding process already to be able to succeed in acquiring the whole entire thing. So I think what my mission and what I want to try to state to you guys tonight is, we're not giving up on the whole thing. We want to find a way, your community wants to find a way to save this and restore it as a fish and wildlife habitat and educational center for our community and the surrounding communities. Thank you.
City Attorney, I have a protocol question for you. I'm not sure, does our protocol manual address more than one turn at the podium for citizen comment?
It would have to be by leave of the council.
Okay. Okay, great. Come on up. State your name for the record, please.
Jeff Olson. I think you have my address already. It's just a point of clarification on the RFA that there's no ability to send this to a referendum with 15%. It has to go to a vote. And it has to be a 60% vote because it does include a taxation issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Steve Holmes, 10150 Northeast 201st Street, resident and business owner in Bothell. So I work on the river a lot, as you all know. I don't think everybody here knows me. We get a lot of people that comes up from Seattle, way up north, and they come to Bothell to paddle the river. And I think that saving the back nine and the front nine is very crucial to our area. Bothell's known for the Smamish River. So I know everybody on the council wants to save it. And I just want to have it on record with my voice that I am for it. I am for One Bothell. And, you know, we get a lot of people down at the park, and they love that river. And we got to keep it as pristine as possible. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Are there any, is there anybody else that would like to comment? Great. Thank you all for your comments. Oh, City Manager.
I just simply wanted to indicate, since it was raised tonight, that the RFA studied, I just checked the website, and the final study is on the website.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You can access it by the front page, or on the front page of the services on page.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, that, since that brings us to the end of public comment, next up would be our consent agenda. And it looks like items, the March 10 and 17 meeting, was it just the 17?
Just 17.
Just the 17th meeting minutes were polled, as well as AB 15-032, consider approval interlocal agreement with Clallum County for vehicle outfitting services. AB 15-033, consider approval of high voltage distribution easement and temporary construction easement for the Fitzgerald substation project with Snoomish County Public Utility District Number One, as well as AB 15-034, consider acquisition of a closed circuit television utility inspection system or camera van. That leaves, excuse me, the minutes of March 10 and AB 15-031, consider approval of February 2015 payroll and benefit transactions. Is there a motion to approve those two consent items?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lamb and a second by Councilmember Ray. Since we're kind of mixed up at the dais here, we'll be going to the voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Mayor Freed absent and excused. So that brings us to the March 17, 2015 minutes. Councilmember Sandberg, you polled this item?
Yes, thank you. On page 13, there is language regarding the added item. And I would like the, the language changed from, it's at the top of the page, page 13, it says, "Discussion Regarding a Potential Ballot Measure Banning Fireworks." I would like that instead to read, "Added Item Discussion Regarding Potential Ballot Measure Timing For The 2015 Election Season." Because when I added that item, it was in reference to several potential ballot measures that we might consider. It wasn't exclusively to discuss about banning fireworks. So to repeat, the change would be, "Discussion Regarding a Potential Ballot Measure Timing For The 2015 Election Season."
I'd like to go back and look at the tape because I don't remember what that, honestly, I thought it was about fireworks. But I'm happy, about specifically about a proposal to ban fireworks. So, but I'm happy to go back and look at it and see, see what we have.
That's fine.
Could we have the clerk go back and review it and then bring it back?
Sure.
Okay. Great. So we'll have the clerk look at that and bring it back at a later date. So next up, we have AB 15-032, which you also polled, Councilmember Sandberg.
Okay, I sent a couple of questions to the city manager. And I was wondering if we do have staff here to answer.
My name's Clark Meek. I'm your fleet facilities manager for the city of Bothell. This particular agenda bill addresses a request to authorize staff to enter into an interlocal with Clallum County, allowing us to extend their agreement they have with systems for public safety for us to use them as our vehicle, emergency vehicle outfitter. Each year, the city, as part of our asset replacement, replaces a number of our police, including fire vehicles. And as we get those vehicles off the state bid primarily, we then send them to have, you know, their light bars, all the lighting pushbars, gun locks, and all those particular items installed into the rigs and vehicles. This interlocal will allow us to continue using the same rates that we've had for the last two years for the next four years. The specific questions that I was made aware of regarding this agenda bill, the first was the inconsistency between the $85,000 and the above listed, and then in the body, it refers to 76. Frankly, staff is a little miffed where that came from. So I apologize for miscommunication on that. No, the other question was, does Clallum County get any pay for, for this agreement? The answer is no. They do not. Most public agencies, as they bid out, put a clause in there allowing other public agencies to work with them on this. And this is one of those cases, and they have approved us to do so. The other question was, what work needs to be done? I think I've kind of given you a short list of that. The last remaining question is, are we required to use systems for public safety? The answer is no. It is staff's strong recommendation that we continue to use them. We've been very satisfied with their work. They've stood behind their work when we've ever had any issues. They've taken back, fixed it promptly and without charge. They're very expedient and work with us to get the job we need to have done.
Okay, thanks. That answers my questions.
Okay. And Councilmember Evans?
Clark, what is our process? I know in several things we contract or bid out, or services we provide, we'll have a contract for two, three, four, five years. But do we have a policy when, when we do go back out and bid things in general?
Again, we're not required to. We can tap into this option here, doing an interlocal, or what some call piggybacking.
Right.
On an existing agreement. We did go out to proposals two years ago, in which we did enter into an agreement with SPS at that time.
Okay, that's a couple of years ago. Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Clark. Next up, AB 15-033, consider approval of a high voltage distribution easement and temporary construction easement for the Fitzgerald substation project with Snoomish County Public Utility District Number One. Councilmember Sandberg, you polled that also.
I did. And some of the questions, I had, I had three questions for this one. First of all, it looks like the Snoomish County Public Utility District will be doing some work in the wetlands. And so I wanted to know what assurances are provided that the PUD will fully restore and monitor its restoration of the wetlands. I asked that we receive a map that shows the location of the easement and the work, because our packet didn't have a map that showed that from a higher level perspective. It was like a, like a lot line adjustment map. So I didn't really know where the work was occurring. And then it looks like we'll be receiving $83,000 in revenue from the sale of the easement. And do we have any ideas on where that money will go?
I'll answer them in that order. In regards to what, what we have in place to preserve and the restoration of the wetlands and so forth, the city requires that a cap or critical areas alteration permit be issued for any work in this area. They, the community development department is prepared to issue that. And that permit will allow us to monitor and require them to meet all those mitigation requirements. As indicated in the agenda bill, the city requested that the PUD work with the company that we have under contract for our monitoring of those wetlands, so as we could stay consistent with the existing requirements that the city have, has. Regards to your question about the map, I have here, green represents the actual easement that PUD will be following, all the way up to the proposed substation that's going in. The yellow is the outline of city ownership of the Public Works Operations Center with our physical structures lying in here and the admin building here. Does that help answer your questions there? As to the $83,000 that we will receive, I'm not aware of it being set aside for anything as, to this date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, we have AB 15-034, consider acquisition of a closed circuit television utility inspection system. I believe you polled this also, Councilmember Sandberg. I believe you polled this also, Councilmember Samberg.
Yes, and I, so I asked, there was a funding split, and I was curious as to why it was split the way it was between, it's split between the Vehicle Asset Replacement Fund and the Storm and Sewer Utility Fund. So curious as to why it was split that way. And then, previously, we outfitted a repurposed aid car, so I was curious, you know, what was the cost of doing something like that? Because we're, we're spending quite a bit of money, $187,000, on a, on a camera system to, I would imagine, look at our underground sewer and stormwater system?
Correct. That's the primary uses.
Okay.
To answer your questions in regarding to why the funding is split that way, the city has been set aside funds in the asset replacement for the purchase of this replacement for many years, to the tune of $150,000. When we went out and got the proposals, as you see listed in your attachment in this agenda bill, we found that we were short funding. The alternative that we were recommending is to share that split between the Storm and Water Department funding to pay the additional costs for the acquisition of that vehicle. Your other question regarding the outfitting of the aid car, over 12 years ago, the city repurposed an old aid car that was surplus by the Fire Department and installed a portable camera system in it, and the rough numbers that we were able to come up with today was approximately $70,000 to do that. If you'll see in one of the proposals for just a portable unit, it was, I think it was, let's see, $163,000 just for the unit. So we certainly wouldn't be able to come up with a price very close to that. I can assure you, and to offer, we have a number of the staff here tonight to answer any technical questions, but the city's systems have expanded, and under our new code requirements, we have to be able to document the conditions of those systems, and these cameras allow us to do that, look for any particular blockages or breaks that may be coming, and so forth.
Well, thank you for your explanation. It did seem a little bit high for a camera system, but if the camera system alone, which did cost $70,000 12 years ago, now costs, what did you say? $160?
The one portable unit that we actually got in our proposals indicated it was $163,000 just for the camera unit. So that's not necessarily represented what we would have gotten in a low bid, if that's what we actually sent out proposals for, but that's just an example.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Evans?
Do we ever contract these services, or at all, Clark? Have we in the past?
In my years here, I know we used to contract some of the services out. I do not know if we do now. We've done it all in-house.
Okay. How often is this truck used? On a daily basis?
Good evening, Nick Stroop, Public Works Superintendent. This truck is actually used on a daily basis and around the clock. We have currently a couple hundred miles of sewer main and storm main that we use this truck to inspect our pipes and the condition of those pipes.
And we buy evactor trucks? What's an evactor truck cost?
Right now, they're running a little bit over $400,000.
Okay. That's what we suck out the storm drains and things with. We buy street sweepers, all these types of things, but this, this particular piece of equipment can head off potential disasters down the road, significant savings, that type of thing by...
Absolutely, and it actually can, in the middle of a crisis, get us to the problem real quick, so we see what, you know, what we're dealing with immediately, so we know how to deal with it.
It is an expensive piece of equipment, as much of our equipment is expensive, but it's very important to our operation, and I...
It's critical.
I would support the approval of this purchase.
Councilmember Samberg?
I would make the motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Samberg, second by Councilmember Agnew, to approve the March 7th, oh, I'm sorry, we're bringing back the March 17th minutes, so it would be to approve AB 15-032, consider approval of interlocal agreement with Clallum County for vehicle outfitting services. AB 15-033, consider approval of a high voltage distribution easement and temporary construction easement for the Fitzgerald substation project with Snoomish County Public Utility District Number One. And AB 15-034, consider acquisition of a closed-circuit television utility inspection system or camera van. Again, we're on voice vote today, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Mayor Freed absent and excused. So that brings us to the end of our consent agenda. So next up would be new business, AB 15-035, consider approval of board and commission appointments. Mayor Freed will be participating via phone on this subject, so we will, I'll dial him up at this point and bring him into the fold. Mayor Freed, this is Deputy Mayor Spivey. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, and can the rest of council hear Mayor Freed?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mayor, as a chair, I'll let you know that we are participating and all doing voice votes tonight. We are now at AB 15-035, consider approval of board and commission appointments. As we start off on this, I'd like to make a comment in that, as we all know, when you, when you don't attend a meeting, you tend to get work assigned to you. Or, in my case, while I was ill, I was unable to attend the original board appointment meetings, and we ended up with a tie, and so, as a result, I've received a lot of phone calls from citizens expressing their point of view on this subject. Unfortunately, I did receive a phone call that essentially threatened my name and my reputation unless I, if I didn't vote for a particular candidate. That being said, I don't think it's fair to me or any of the candidates that we would be addressing tonight to have a vote under those types of conditions. I feel that maybe we need a cooling off period, that, and as well as, a lot of this seems to be tied to the current investigation that's going on. So I feel that, as a chair, I can't make a motion, but it would be my recommendation that we postpone the board and commission appointments until probably the first meeting in May, at least definitely after the, we receive the report on the investigation. I think it's only fair to the candidates that are involved, and I think it's the right thing to do to take and eliminate a threat from the possible influence of voting, as well as it gives us an opportunity to receive a report and get the facts, so that votes can be taken appropriately. So with that being said, Councilmember Lamb?
So I'm very sorry to hear that, and I'm sorry that anybody would threaten you over vote that's not appropriate, and that's not, that's sad, that somebody in the community would reach out and threaten you, and I, I'm sorry that you had to experience that. As a practical matter, that kind of leaves us, I think, in the same position we were, so, since you would like to extend it to the first meeting in May, and since that's your request, in light of that, and in light of your comments, I'll move to, move this matter to a date certain, which would be our May 5th meeting. Is there a second?
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Lamb, second by Councilmember Agnew, to move the consideration of approval for boards and commission appointments to a date certain of the first meeting in May. Is there any, is there any discussion? Councilmember Evans?
Yes, I guess I wanted to ask staff, are, so are we down a person on the planning commission now? Have we lost one member? We appointed one, so David Vallée should be back on the board, but has someone left that we have a vacant position there? Do we know?
We have one member left, and you have that position.
So, so the planning commission is now working with six commissioners instead of seven. I guess, my preference would be to resolve this. I'd like our commission to have a full commission to work with. If we need to wait until, until May 5th, that's fine. I guess I'd just like to comment, I've received quite a few phone calls and letters also, and I can't remember a time when, in my seven and a half years on the council, that there's been this type of discussion about appointments on our various boards and commissions. We had a lot of excellent applicants this time, very, very qualified. Unfortunately, we don't have positions for everybody, but I hope those people who express interest in serving on our boards and commissions stay involved with the city and listen to what's going on, because as one of the members, the public mentioned earlier, that they hadn't been involved in the city, and I really hope that those that do want to be involved will stay involved, whether they're appointed, they're appointed on a board or commission or not. I don't know if we have a mailing list that goes out to interested residents or things, but it's great to have the community involved in things. So I guess my preference would be to move forward with this tonight, but if it's the preference of the council as a whole that we, we go to May, that's, I can support that.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Councilmember Samberg?
I'm also sorry and disappointed to hear that you or Councilmember Evans or anybody else received threatening phone calls or messages about your vote. I think that's really unfortunate, and I will support the motion to postpone in deference to your concerns.
Councilmember Ream?
I support suspending it, or waiting until May, that's fine. I do hope that we could contact candidates, though, individually and let them know, is that something that we can do, just to let them know we're waiting until May now instead of tonight?
Certainly we will.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew, you've...
I am in support of the motion. I also feel that it's sad that you were verbally abused.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Spivey?
Yes, Mayor Freed, you, would you like to comment?
It's very sad to hear what you just shared. It's beyond that, it's extremely disappointing that the attitude apparently that came out of last meeting, and it is due to your own phone calls or whatever happened. We've had somebody that has put their name into, in a position several people have, and one was particularly called out at last meeting, who has served in our Parks Board for many, many years, who's a very honest gentleman, who is a family man, has been involved in sports within our city, and served our Parks Board extremely well, a man of great integrity, was attacked, which is extremely unfortunate, and I agree, hopefully cooler heads will prevail as we move into the future, and hope that we can get back to a place where there's that respect again that the majority of council is expecting and hoping for. So I'll support the motion that was made by Councilmember Lamb.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Ream, do you have a question?
Yes. I was not, I did not receive threatening phone calls. I did receive phone calls and emails, but we have two incumbents here, one on the Park Board and one on the Landmark Preservation Board, that, I don't know why we couldn't go ahead and finish those, complete those, because I think, I think there's unanimous agreement on that. One, that would be on the Planning Commission, would be Merrill Charles, who is serving now.
Not the Parks Commission.
Excuse me, the Parks Board. And on the Landmark Preservation Board is Reginald Olson, so if...
So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I would move to amend the motion to table to appoint Merrill Charles to the Parks and Recreation Board, and to appoint Reginald Olson to the Landmark Preservation Board. If there's a second for my amending motion.
Okay, and we have an amending motion by Councilmember Lamb, and second by Councilmember Samberg, to appoint, and could you restate that for me, please? Councilmember Lamb?
It would be to appoint Merrill Charles to the Parks and Recreation Board, and Reginald Olson to the Landmark Preservation Board.
And that was both to Landmark Preservation? Okay.
And I normally, I apologize, Mr. Chair, I don't normally, it's normally against our protocol manual to amend your own motion, but I, the spirit moved me, and I think it's the, I think it's the appropriate thing to do.
Okay. Well, I think the balance of councils in support of your motion, just looking at the body language. So we have before us an amending motion to approve, to appoint Reginald Olson to Position One for the Landmark Preservation Board, and, I'm sorry, I gotta thumb through here.
Merrill Charles.
And what? Oh, and Merrill Charles to the Position One of the Parks and Rec Board. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Councilmember Agnew?
Just to be clear, I don't think any, any candidate was attacked or defamed the last meeting we had at all. I think there was a discussion that came up about certain candidates, but I don't think anyone was attacked.
Thank you.
And I guess I'll take the opportunity, Councilmember Agnew, to think when somebody is questioned that they're not individual minds, because they're associated with, that would be an attack on a character that he wouldn't have, you know, the integrity to take votes on his own, in his own role.
Okay.
All right.
Next item.
Thank you, Mayor. So right now, that brings us to the main motion, which is to move... Oh, we'll try and get them back.
I think you don't have them. You didn't vote on the main motion.
Pardon?
Yeah, we got them.
There's no redial function on here. What's going on?
406.
6312.
Hi, you reached any of them, please.
All right. Let's try a different number.
206.
As we got, 9, 206, 714, 1721?
Mm-hmm.
Joshua Freed.
All right, we'll go back to the first number. Maybe he's off of and ready for us. Mayor Freed, you're, we're back. So we are now to the main motion, which would be to move the, all the board and commission appointments with the exception of Reginald Olson to Landmark Preservation Board and Merrill Charles to Parks and Rec Board. Those two exceptions would be to approve them into those positions with the balance being moved to May 5th. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. So Mayor Freed, in being compliant with our protocol manual, this was the one item that you could call in for, so we thank you for your participation and hope that you travel safe and we'll see you next week.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so there we are. Next up would be our, we have a study session regarding the Wayne Golf Course Back Nine, and we do have a staff present.
So, Mr. Chair, if I might, I'd like to make a motion on this matter to waive the executive session privilege for the meeting that took place in November of 2013, which would enable all members of council and staff to discuss the executive session publicly and share with the public what information was presented to them at the executive session where the potential purchase of the Back Nine or the right of first offer was presented.
Is there a second? We have a motion by Mayor Lamb and second by Councilmember Evans to waive the executive session privilege for the November 3rd meeting?
No, it would be for November, I believe it was in late November, early December of 2013. It was the executive session when the right of first offer was presented to the Bothell City Council for the Back Nine.
To waive the executive session where the right of first purchase was offered in November of 2013. So we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Councilmember Sandberg?
He can speak to his motion.
You can go ahead.
I have a question of our city attorney. What is the net effect of waiving the 2013 executive privilege? And previously, Councilmember Lamb recused himself from discussions on the Back Nine, so does that, does this motion affect that?
Well, those are two very distinct questions. I'll take the first one first and the second one second. The first question regarding waiving the executive session is pretty self-explanatory. It just means that we can talk about what was discussed in that executive session, any of the facts or discussions, things that were said, information that was presented is waived, and you breach that confidentiality and you're allowed to speak about it. The second question is, this has nothing to do with whether Mayor Lamb has recused himself or not. Mayor Lamb voluntarily, if my memory serves me correctly, voluntarily recused himself with regard to some portion of the discussion of the Wayne Golf Course. I can't remember exactly whether it was the Back Nine or the Front Nine or everything altogether. It was a voluntary action with no basis in law that I am aware of, and so it would be up to him at any time to make a choice to withdraw his recusal or to continue with that. It's his choice. If council feels that there is actually a conflict, council as a body, there's a process can take that up and address it, but at this point, it's completely and totally within his own personal decision.
And then another question. So when, if the council was to waive its executive session privilege, is that something I would vote on even though I was not present in that meeting, or do I abstain?
No, it is, you would be able to, it would be appropriate for you to vote on that. It's the privilege to the council as a whole, not to a particular individual that was on the council at the time. So the council as a whole makes that decision, and you are now a member of the council as a whole.
And then in terms of the accuracy of recall of a meeting that occurred over a year and a half ago, are there notes regarding this meeting? Because I think, I think if people want to express what was said, I think that's great. I think that's great in view of trying to be as transparent as possible, but one's memory might not be completely accurate with that passage of time if no recording occurred.
No recording occurs in executive session, no notes are taken in executive session. I'm not aware of the existence of any written record with regard to the executive session. That would not be normal or appropriate. And so it is going to be up to the memory and the recall of the individuals involved. There were also staff present, and I'll just say for the record, my memory is the one that should be...
Nah.
Totally.
Okay, thanks.
So, I'll speak to my motion if I may. So I think this is very, very important. I think there's been a lot of questions raised about this particular issue, and I think that there were comments made tonight during public comment that are not true. And I think that we have, without the opportunity to freely discuss it and to freely talk about this meeting and what was or wasn't said, we're at a significant disadvantage. I think it's important for the public trust that this conversation, that the information that was in front of council and how council acted be public. And I think there's no good argument for keeping this executive session matter a secret or concealed, and I think it's important that every council member and every staff member who participated in that feels free to have that discussion. So I would urge my colleagues to pass this motion.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion on the floor? No? All right, hearing and seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of waiving the right to executive session of the November, regarding the first right of offer in the November 2013 exec session meeting, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So thank you for that, Councilmember Lamb. We have, regarding this item, we have a staff presentation from the city manager. City Manager Stowe?
Thank you, Mayor. Pro-Tam and councilmembers, my presentation will be brief. As you know, Councilmember Sandberg requested the council hold the discussion tonight to discuss the Back Nine, specifically requesting that the council ask for a copy of the purchase and sale agreement between Wayne Golf Course Incorporated and any private parties. Council, of course, then agreed to hold this discussion this evening. Staffs aware that the legal counsel assigned by Washington City's Insurance Authority to conduct the independent investigation has made a request for the purchase and sale agreement as part of its investigation. To this point, the city hasn't received a copy of the purchase agreement. The investigation, of course, is ongoing, and we don't have any more information to present to council at this time. Mayor Pro-Tam, that really concludes my brief sort of summary and presentation for tonight, and it's really up to the council for where you want to go with this matter at this point.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stowe. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
I have a point of order. Previously...
State your point of order.
Yeah, previously, Councilmember Lamb had recused himself voluntarily from discussions regarding the Wayne Golf Course, specifically the Back Nine. And so I am asking if he has changed his position on that, and if so, I'd like to take, I'd like the council to take a vote if he will not voluntarily recuse himself.
Thank you for that opportunity, Councilmember Sandberg. When you asked me to recuse myself at the last meeting, you did so on the basis that I was the registered agent for a corporation that the mayor had an interest in. And I guess I would return the question to you, what do you believe a registered agent is? Because you asked for the recusal.
Registered agent is the person on file to which any official paperwork from the state, could be legal representation, that person receives that information on the basis of the corporation. And if I need to, I can get on Wikipedia and get the answer as well.
Well, no, because it was, that was the basis with which you asked me to recuse myself. So an agent for service of process is somebody who accepts lawsuits on behalf of a company. I don't have any objection leaving for this discussion, and your request, and only your request, I will do that. The caveat that I have to that is, last meeting when I excused myself, the conversation went very far afield from the topic that I was recusing myself from. And if that happens again, I will not recuse myself from this matter. So as long as the matter is confined to the Back Nine or the Wayne Golf Course, I'm happy to recuse myself from that at your request, and I will excuse myself, although I don't believe, as the city attorney stated, I need to do so. City Attorney?
City Attorney, you're asking to be recognized.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt like this, but there is a protocol issue that I need, that I feel I need to make the council aware of. The protocol manual actually states that it is a duty of every council member to vote on and to participate on every matter that's before the council unless the council is excused by, unless the council member is excused by a majority of the council. So I believe it would be inappropriate under our protocol manual for Mayor Lamb, for you to excuse yourself on, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lamb, on Councilmember Sandberg's request alone. I think it takes a majority of the council to approve a recusal of that nature, to ask for a recusal of that nature, and that's actually the way our protocol manual is worded. It's, it requires, as a primary and first duty, it requires participation by every council member.
So, City Attorney, does that require a motion, or is that something as a chair, I just move forward?
Well, it would be, Councilmember Lamb has expressed his wish, or if he expresses his wish to recuse himself, states his reason for doing so, and then the council as a whole, if their majority approves that, then he may recuse himself.
So to spare the council that conversation, I will excuse myself from the meeting for the portion where the Back Nine will be discussed. This is not a formal recusal. If the conversation goes to a different matter, I will return to the meeting.
Okay, and City Attorney, just as I recall, even though Councilmember Lamb is excusing himself from the meeting, his presence in the vicinity would, if we were to take a vote, would be a vote in the affirmative, correct?
No. That's actually, well, if he's not in the council meeting, that is not correct. If he's in the council member and states no preference one way or another, then it's a vote in the affirmative.
All right, just for clarification purposes. Councilmember Lamb, I will excuse you for this portion of the meeting. All right, here we are at the Back Nine, and we've waived our executive session right for the, the meeting that gave us a right of first offer in November of 2013, that executive session. Is there any further discussion regarding the Back Nine, and specifically the Back Nine?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, I wanted to make a motion, but if, I have no other discussion, but if the other, I defer to the other council members who want to speak.
So what are we, so we're discussing the Back Nine, to me, there's, I don't know, do we want to start talking about what was discussed in the executive session? Because if we do, I mean, I'm more than happy to kick that off, if that's what...
We have the ability to do that at this point.
I mean, the city manager stated that we don't, the investigation is ongoing, we don't have any additional or new information at this point. We've requested a copy of the purchase and sale agreement on the Back Nine, and so from that standpoint, I think we've addressed the Back Nine. If, I'd be more than happy to talk about the executive session if the council wants to do that.
And as I recall, and I believe you were there, I was there, I believe Mayor Freed, Councilmember Lamb, Councilmember Rayum, and Councilmember Ewing, I don't believe you were there that night, Councilmember Agnew. The city manager and the city attorney were present, as well as I think Public Works Director...
Parks and Recreation, or the Recreation Manager was there.
Yeah, Pat Parkhurst was there, and I can't, I believe that's all that were in attendance. The city manager presented the letter from the Richards family, offering us per the agreement on the development rights, the development right agreement. The letter was presented to us about our first right of offer to the Back Nine. As I recall, there was no discussion other than if we had the money, yeah, we'd like to do it, but there was, there was nothing, no discussion to seek a consensus to come to the dais and make a motion to take any type of action. Everybody essentially remained quiet on the topic, and when we did return to the dais, there was not a motion made by any of the council members, and for the next 45 days, there was no motion of any type made by any of the council members. And I don't know, Councilmember Sandberg, if you were ever privy to information on that, but you would have had the opportunity in that window, once you were sworn in, to make a motion. But that's how I recall that executive session, and so, Councilmember Evans, you have the floor.
Right, I want to make it clear who was there. Councilmember Agnew was not there, is my understanding, because I think you were ill at that time. Councilmember Sandberg was not on the council at that time, and so I think all of the council members were there that were on the council at that time, with the exception of Councilmember Agnew. Is that the reelection? And I agree that the city attorney was there, the city manager was there, and Pat Parkhurst was there. And it was actually, I think, Deputy Mayor, it was actually Pat Parkhurst who presented the item to the council in the executive session and presented the letter that, what's their names, I'm sorry?
The Richards.
The Richards were going to, interested in selling the Back Nine, and she presented the letter, and the discussion was then opened by the mayor, was there interest in acquiring the Back Nine. And as I recall, the discussion was very limited. We all kind of said, yeah, we looked at each other, and it would be very nice to have that, but the fact that we did not have funding for that, nor did we have funding for many of the other projects that are listed in the Pro-SAP plan, that one is listed in the Pro-SAP plan, as was mentioned tonight by one of the speakers. There's a whole list of priority of projects in there. We attempted to get some of those approved as part of our bond issue recently, which unfortunately that failed, so, and we, there were a lot of needs on our plate at that time, as there is today, and while we all thought it was a nice, we appreciated the offer, and they were in compliance with the, with the agreement at that time, to make us, provide that offer to us. And while there really was very little discussion, all of us looked at each other and said, you know, it would be nice, but financially, we just don't have the money to do that right now. And it was, I don't think this, the matter, after Pat Parkhurst presented the matter in a very, two or three minutes, and there was two or three minutes, or five minutes of very brief discussion amongst the council, we moved on. I don't recall if there was another item on the agenda, but there was not support from, not one council member came forward, as I recall in that meeting, and said, yes, we need to buy this property, or we need to find the money to do that. I think there was an, there was a, we all understand the desire, have a desire to preserve property, but financially, that just was not within our means... property, but financially, that just was not within our means at that time. And therefore, no council member of anyone that was there took any movement to, to move forward with the acquisition. That's what I recall happened at the meeting.
Yeah, and you are correct. It was Pat Parkhurst that made the presentation.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Rayum?
So, my, my memory is not the most stellar from a year and a half ago, but I do, I do remember having the thought in my head of, like, just coming to the realization that in 45 days, even in any conservation easement, for that matter, to give a city 45 days to come up with millions of dollars is pretty unrealistic. I mean, it just doesn't happen that way. We don't have a couple hundred million dollars laying around, except in our reserve, which we need as a reserve. So, I remember thinking about, when the presentation was presented to us, that, you know, even buying that, that truck, I don't know how long it took us to get that truck specked out that we just approved on the consent agenda tonight for $180,000. That's an order of magnitude under the cost of buying the back nine. But I can guarantee you, that took them more than 45 days to put together the, the cost of that truck. And so, and then a whole, whole lot longer time to actually save up and purchase it. So, I, I remember thinking that. I don't remember a specific staff recommendation, one way or the other. Did you guys help?
Uh...
I'd like to give the floor to the city attorney.
Yeah, so I'll jump in on that. As you know, in executive session, we can't make final decisions of any sort, so we're very careful about, about the discussions and things that go on in executive session. For point of clarification, I believe an additional person that was present was probably, was our community development director as well. But at that meeting, staffs, what staff stated was that it was our intention to let the 45 days lapse unless a council member was to come back out, when we came back out on the dais, a council member was to make a motion in favor of that. And I think the consensus was, as you've stated, that it'd be nice, but there was, there was no money. But my mem, but I made a point, as I do in most executive sessions, and I remember this distinctly, of telling council, this is what we're going to do. We can't make a decision as staff, this is what we're going to do. You can't make a decision in executive session if any council member wishes to direct staff to go in a different direction. You need to come back out on the dais at some point in the next, or at a future meeting, and make a motion to take some sort of action, different than just allowing the 45 days to run. So explicitly stated that. And as you have stated, the consensus was, there's, there's no money. It's a nice thing, but there's no money, there's not really much point in, in going any further with this. So, as such, there was no staff recommendation, really, staff just advised council that this, that we were taking no action unless council directed otherwise.
Councilmember Rayum, mute the floors, yours again.
That's all I really had to say. I mean, I, I remember thinking about, how nice it would have been to purchase that property. It's right on the Samamish River. It would be a huge, we could do a lot with that property through salmon recovery funds, and I, I chair those, the Y Rate Salmon Recovery, well, sorry, vice chairs, the Y Rate Salmon Recovery Council, and I serve on the Pigeonstown Salmon Recovery Council. So, I see projects that, that one would have been a gem compared to a lot of the ones that are state funds. So, but with that, we, like, like we have all said, there, we needed to have cash in hand within 45 days. There was no reason to give staff direction to do something other than to not respond, because we did not have the money to, to do something.
And as I recall, I, I think one of the things that came out was, it'd be a great expansion of Blythe Park, as part of the discussion. And so, is there, Councilmember Sandberg?
I have some questions. So, do any of you recall being given the 1996 conservation easement that would have dictated some of the terms of that right of first offer on the back nine?
I don't recall being given that specifically, but being made aware of the 45-day opportunity.
And at any time, did staff tell you that there is value in just making an offer versus relying on inaction and not making an offer at all?
I don't remember that specifically, one way or the other.
We were aware of the 96 easement requirement.
Which requirement? I mean, if you didn't have the document?
We knew that the property, well, we had the easement on the front nine. We had first right of refusal on the back nine.
Well, I tend to offer on...
And, and we complied with that, they complied with that agreement, that by giving us that first right of refusal.
Well, I guess I'm just suggesting that when I became first aware of, of this issue, it was from a citizen group that asked to meet with me and said, and said, have you seen this conservation easement? And it was an extensive document that captured the, the value of the Wayne Golf Course to the community. And so, I would have expected that that document would have been provided in advance of an executive session, because it was pertinent information germane specifically to the back nine. I mean, we're not talking about, you know, history of, it was explained to me that as back, far back as 1993, and then I think we heard tonight from one of the presenters that maybe in 1989, I mean, that this has been a continued priority of the city. And so, I would, I would have thought that with such an important discussion occurring, there would be at least that conservation easement in your hands for you to review before making a decision, because there is value in just making an offer, which is described in that conservation easement. And so, if you, if the council was just told, oh, there's no money, too bad, we would have really loved to, if we had the leprechaun deliver the pot of gold, but we can't, you know, we don't have that money. I mean, that's, that's one thing, but I think that, I think that additional information could have been provided and discussed to give you maybe more background, or a greater sense of urgency on the, the long-term commitment of this community towards that property.
City, or, city manager?
At that meeting, I did have a copy of the conservation easement. I did make council aware of the ramifications of the, the terms. I mean, I explained them to, to council at that executive session, and I believe that we actually handed out copies of, of the easement at that meeting. We don't keep official packets, so it's, that's, that's my memory. But, but in, in any event, I remember distinctly going over that easement to understand the offer in, ahead of advising council, and had, and had a copy of that with me, and would have spoke, and spoke from it at the, at the executive session.
Councilmember Rayum?
I do recall the city manager having a copy of the, the conservation easement, sorry. I don't remember seeing a copy of it. I mean, I thought, you had one in your, you explained the context of the letter to us and that type of thing, but it wasn't like, we went through, I don't know how many pages that thing is, but we didn't, we didn't take a timeout for a half hour and read the thing from cover to cover, so.
And just to be clear for, for the public watching, that's a public document, of course. Anyone can request a copy of that document at any, any certain time.
Thank you. I know that every council member present at the time was aware of the value of the back nine and what it could mean to the city. But they were also very aware of the financial situation at the time. And we all knew there wasn't going to be a leprechaun with a pot of gold. We were, we're just coming out of the recession, and we were still, as Councilmember Evans pointed out, we have a lot of projects, and not just in the Pro-SAP, but in Public Works, and, and all aspects of the city. And we were aware of the financial constraints, especially coming out of the recession, and as we're trying to rebuild our, our reserves, which were very important in how we managed our way through the recession, much better than many communities. So, we were quite aware, as a, as a council that was present there, of the importance and value of the back nine and what it could mean to the city. But again, nobody that was there at that time, or in the 45-day window, moved any action. So, is there any further discussion in regards to the back nine? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'll defer to...
Councilmember Rayum?
I just wanted to say one last thing about, and I did talk to the city attorney about this, too. I didn't feel like I could come out and say something on the dais, not that I would have, you know, in hindsight, you know, I could say I would have. But I was not aware that I had the ability to say certain portions of our executive session at the dais after the executive session was over, to, to voice to the public what was communicated in executive session. I've always thought was basically behind closed doors, we don't talk about it, and I just kept that firewall. Now, this has definitely been a learning lesson for me, that to be very specific and very pointed to the city attorney, what exactly is executive privilege that is communicated in those sessions, and so that I know where that, because the firewall isn't everything. It's not all encompassing. There's only pieces of the conversations that happen in an executive session that are executive, executive privileged. So, going forward, at least while I'm on this council, I'll be sure to ask that question in executive session. So, that's all.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, I, I wanted to make a motion.
Make your motion.
Okay.
Is your motion germane to the back nine of Wayne Golf Course?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I would like to make the motion that we direct the city manager to request the binding agreement, purchase and sale agreement, right to first purchase, or other applicable, applicable agreement for Wayne Golf Course's back nine, as described in the mayor's 31415 letter, for the purposes of verifying that the conditions of section 17 of the 1996 conservation easement have been met.
That's a pretty lengthy motion, and we'll, we'll work through it. City Clerk, are you capturing most of that? Hopefully, the recording is.
Yes, I do.
Wonderful.
I can send it to you.
Could you slide that copy down, so as we go through this, I can state the motion?
I can slide my tablet down.
When, when we get to restating the motion, that would be wonderful. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Sandberg, and a second by Councilmember Rayum, to direct the city manager to gather some information, which we'll all state here in a moment. I have a question of the city attorney. This is just a request of information. Is this something that Mayor Lamb, or Councilmember Lamb, this, this is kind of a gray area as to, it's just a request for information, it's not, I'd like your opinion on his ability to participate in this vote.
It's entirely up to him, whether he participates on this or not. It's still within the subject of the back nine, so I would assume that his answer would be the same as it was previously, that he's recusing himself, or excusing himself.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rayum?
I'll be supportive of the motion. I also want to let the citizens know that for full transparency, that I live on the front nine of Wayne Golf Course, although I don't think it's impacted any of my decision and my decisions. Walk my dogs around the back nine, go into Blythe Park, look back over through the back nine, and I, I just envision. I hope we can do more than envision.
Councilmember Evans?
I know that we've discussed this issue of the section that Councilmember Sandberg referenced, and I, I think at, at one point, the attorney may have given us his interpretation of that we have satisfied that condition. Maybe, maybe not. But, but my question is, we are going, the investigation has requested a copy of that purchase and sale agreement. So, what does this motion, if we're going to get a copy of it, why do we have to have the city manager go get it? We're going to get that, I guess, is, is the question I have. And how, and, and I guess I would like, if the city attorney hasn't addressed that before, of have we complied with that section, what was it, section 17 or something, I think you mentioned? And, and, or are we in violation of that, or whatever the case may be? Because that's my impression that, that we're not, but...
Well, first of all, any request by the city manager is going to be one, is going to be completely redundant of the efforts that are being pursued currently by the investigator. So, you know, that's, that's up to council, if they want to ask the city manager to perform redundant duties. The, the other answer to your question is, you know, the, as far, to the city's knowledge, the contract, the easement, which is also a form of a contract, has been complied with to the sort of normal business practice, extent of normal business practice. The Richards have done everything that they're required to do under that agreement. The city has done everything that it's required to do. All parties have acted in conformance with the agreement. The state, the, the, the concern by Councilmember Sandberg, as I understand it, is that we just simply don't believe them. And so, we're going to fact-check them, and we're going to double-check them, and, and try to get them to provide us further proof, other than their word, that they are being honest with the city. And that's what this, this effort is about. But within the four walls of the, of the contract, we've, we've complied, they've complied, at least to the extent of our ability to know that. There's nothing that the contract would require us to do further, or the easement, which is a contract, would require us to do further at this time. But it's, it's completely within council's authority to ask that a staff member go out and request that information. We have no ability to compel it, but we can ask.
Is it this section, or question, I think, that may have been raised, is this something that will be covered in the investigation, that, that we, we can ask the investigator to look at this and to see that both sides have complied with that option?
The investigator, this is part of the investigation. The investigator is looking specifically at the issue of whether anybody had a conflict of interest, in, in an attempt to confirm factually whether or not the timelines work out one way or the other, to show either a conflict or not a conflict of interest. The investigator is seeking that document in order to, and, and other information as well. It's not just the document. He's seeking an, an interview with, with, you know, the Richards as well, or with Mr. Richards as well, to confirm even more than just what the document would confirm. So, that is, that is information that is being sought, and to the extent of the investigator's ability, will be obtained and will be included in the ultimate report to council.
And I guess, I do recall that we have discussed this before, whether it was in executive session or not. We, and I do remember that you mentioned, you brought up the idea of the attorney's interpretation of that section, and how we've applied, or how, how we've satisfied that. And I do recall, I think there was a discussion, I think Councilmember Sandberg was questioning the legal counsel that we were receiving. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, now that that's come out, I think I am, I am remembering that discussion. So, I, I guess I just, I don't understand the purpose of the motion unless there's, for some reason, you don't trust the legal counsel we received to date, or whatever the case may be, or you've got other legal counsel, or, I don't understand that. We've asked for the document, it's going to be, we're going to get it, we're going to get the entire timeline, section 17 will be addressed. I don't understand the purpose of the motion.
Councilmember Sandberg?
If I may, I'd like to speak to my motion.
Please do.
So, maybe to your first point, I can see... So, maybe to your first point, I can see that this would appear to be a redundant request, given that the investigator is going to be requesting this. But I feel that redundancy is important, because it has taken me since mid-February to even get this item properly placed on the agenda, so that I can ask council to take the vote to direct staff to make this inquiry. I have asked it several times and have been told, no, we're not going to make the inquiry, you need to get the council as a whole to have, to direct us to do that. So it has taken until today to go through the proper process to get to this point. It seems redundant, and if you will remember, I had to request this to be on the agenda at the end of our March meeting, excuse me, our last March meeting, which predated the investigation and the announcement that the investigation would be requesting this document. I feel it's important that even though it is redundant to make this request, because if for some reason, the investigator is unable to get that document, I feel it's important that the council has at least made its full effort to make the request. And the city does have the basis to make that request, per the conditions of section 17, specifically, I think it's 17D, and the conservation easement. And it's important to know the timeline, because it is possible that the timeline was exceeded, which would mean that the intent to offer would revert back to the city. And so, I think, I think it's inaccurate to characterize my request as one of not trusting any of the members of this agreement. I would like verification, and I think that is our job as legislators, to get verification that the city's interests have, in the back nine, have been, have been fully served and appropriately served. And we won't know that until we get a full accounting of the timeline of offers made on the back nine. And we have not received those. And so, I like to be a trusting individual in my personal life, but in my professional life, I need evidence. And so, this is what I'm asking for, and I think it's important, in the interest of full transparency, that we as a council ask staff to request this document. Thank you.
Councilmember Rayum.
So I was just going to say, I didn't, I didn't consider the motion, and I seconded it, redundant to the investigation. I thought it was a totally separate issue, in that we have, there's a clause in this, I think it's section or article 12, I can't remember if it's article or section, of the conservation easement, there's a 12-month lapse after we, after our 45 days ran out, because we didn't make an offer, then there's a 12-month period, and if the purchase and sale agreement isn't done by that point, then we have, the city was supposed to get another opportunity to make an offer. And so, what I believe councilmember Sandberg was asking for, which I fully support, is verification of dates, when the 45 days was up, when the purchase and sale agreement was signed, and is there an opportunity, I mean, there was $900,000 of public money spent on that conservation easement. And I think we have the right, and we have the responsibility, to verify that those dates are accurate, those dates have been met. It's not a matter of, I don't trust the Richards, or I don't trust the mayor, or I don't trust anybody. The matter at hand is, we spent 800, almost $900,000 on that, on that piece of paper and that property, and I think we should ask the staff as soon as we can, because there's people out there surveying the property right now, and they're probably trying to plat it as fast as they can, that it's time is of the essence, and I don't think it's really tied up with the investigation, I think it's a whole separate matter. Because if there is an opportunity, I know One Bothel has already collected quite a bit of money, and has communications with the Richards, so if there was an ability for them to, if there's ability for the city to help the situation where we have an opportunity to make another offer, I see that as really important and necessary, and not connected to the investigation.
Councilmember Rayum.
I support the motion. For transparency's sake, I want to look at everything. I think that the citizens are asking for that, and I think we need to hear the citizens.
Yeah, you, I'm the only one that hasn't spoken to the motion yet. I am cautiously supporting this motion. My concern is that we are trying to work in good faith with the Richards, as well as other parties, and my biggest concern is that we come across as harassing the Richards, which could cause problems in achieving the end goal. And so, although I want to be transparent, and all, and I would like to have this information, I believe this, we're going to get this information in our report from the investigator. That being said, I am very concerned that if we, we come across as harassing to the Richards, and that, and that could bring its own problems. I will go ahead and support this, and with the full understanding, and I hope the rest of council understands that, there's no requirement that they give any of this to us. And so, I think a, and I know the city manager will make a polite request, because I don't want us to come across as harassing the Richards for information. And that's, that's my big concern. And I'm supporting this in the interest of transparency, but I do want the public to know that there's no requirement on the Richards to provide this, and that we do need to tread lightly, so that we're not coming across in a negative way, that could hurt the end result of what's trying to be done here. So all the other, everybody's had an opportunity to speak, is there a desire to have another round? Are you, councilmember Evans, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I understand the motion is to ask the city, ask the city manager to...
Would you like me to restate the motion?
Please.
Okay. I thank you, councilmember Sandberg, for loaning me your laptop, so I could jot this down. The motion is, made by councilmember Sandberg, seconded by councilmember Rayum, to direct the city manager to request the binding agreement, purchase and sale agreement, right to first purchase, or other applicable agreement for the Wayne Golf Course back nine, as described in the mayor's March 4 of 2015 letter, for the purposes of verifying that the conditions of section 17 of the 1996 conservation easement have been met.
Okay, and so it's, it's my understanding that we're going to get that exact information as part of the investigation.
We believe we will.
Have we...
The request that the investigator has made is the exact same document that I understand councilmember Sandberg is asking, that we make another request for that document, which is the purchase and sale agreement, between the Richards and any interested parties regarding the back nine. It's the same document.
But how do you know it's a purchase and sale agreement?
What else would it be?
That's what I don't know, because the letter doesn't indicate that it's a purchase and sale agreement.
Well...
That's why I said...
The document typically, when someone is in negotiations, and they're working towards closing, there's no other name for that document, that I'm aware of, that would be binding in any sense.
So I just want...
Industry language, I'm not certain what you're referring to.
So just, just a point of order to keep the, our meeting functioning properly, please wait to be recognized before discussing, you know, conversing. I would appreciate that as the chair, and it's, in all due respect to all the council members here, that we perform our meeting in a professional decorum. So please ask to be recognized before moving forward with discussion. So councilmember Sandberg, do you have any other comments?
No, and I apologize for speaking out of turn.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans.
I thought I had the floor. I didn't, I didn't know, did I have the floor? Okay, well, but sorry if I...
This is a general comment, it's just a general reminder for all of us that...
No, I appreciate that.
We need to do this.
I support you in that. I just, I am all for transparency, that is why we are having an investigation, to go through all the details of this, and find out what, if there are problems here, what they are, and the background, that's what the investigation is about. I support trans, that's why I supported the investigation. And so, I, I'm still struggling a little bit with why we need to make another request for this same type of information that's going to be covered in an investigation. And I want the information, I want the agreement. And I'm assuming that's what the investigation's going to get, and bring that back to us. If that doesn't happen, then we'll certainly go after it a different way. Although we have no, no right to receive that, or we know, we can't demand that and expect to get it, but we can certainly request it. But let's let the investigation run the course, do the job, bring it back to us with all of this information, and go from there. I, I just, I'm still at a loss as to why we're doing the same thing twice. And for that reason, I'll be voting no on the motion.
All right. Everybody's had more than ample time to weigh in on this, so the motion as presented, councilmember Rayum.
I have an amending motion. I'd like to amend the motion to include requesting Mayor Joshua Freed for his copy of the purchase and sale agreement, as well as the Richards.
Second.
So there's a motion on the floor from councilmember Rayum, seconded by councilmember Sandberg, to request the purchase and sale agreement of Mayor Freed's regarding this issue. Is that correct? Okay. First off, I don't know that there, it's, I don't know that, you know, if it's particularly Mayor Freed's, or, or, you know, as I rumor, I've heard, he's only, there's only like a 5% share that he's involved with, so I don't know that he would be the one that we would request it from. And your motion is very specific.
Can I speak to my motion?
You may speak to your motion.
Mayor Freed's the only other party that we're sure of, that's involved, other than the Richards. So what I was thinking was to try to be, to not hone in on just the Richards individually, but to ask both parties that we know are involved. And you're right, I think, I've heard the same thing, but I don't know, I've heard it, I don't know it, but I do have the letter from Mayor Freed that says he most definitely was, or is involved in the purchase of it. So I was just, you know, assuming two asks is better than one. Maybe Mayor Freed would be more compelled to give, to give up that document, or to maybe release the clause in there that's not allowing the document to be communicated, or whatever, but I figured it would make more sense to have the Richards and the other party be requested to give us that information.
Okay.
Double R F.
Councilmember Evans.
I could, I could support the amendment, if, I mean, if it was a separate motion. I'm not opposed to asking Mayor Freed to give us the document. We can, we can make that request, and if he wants to give it to us, that's fine, I'm not opposed to asking for it. But I'm opposed to doing the same thing twice, that we're already doing, so, but if, just as a council, if we want to make that request to Mayor Freed, I'm, I'm fine with making that request.
City manager.
This is likely irrelevant, because you're asking for the document three times, but as I understand, the motion asking for the document twice was based on our conservation easement that we have with the Richards family, not with another private individual. So if the basis is because of the conservation easement, then it's probably should, only two copies of the same agreement are probably necessary in accordance with your motion.
Well, councilmember Sandberg, do you have anything to weigh in on?
I'm interested in pursuing any avenue that needs to be taken to get this information, because it is our duty and our responsibility, on behalf of the citizens, on behalf of the $900,000 that's already been invested on this property, to do our complete due diligence and to be completely transparent. So I will be supporting the motion.
Any amending motion?
Amending motion.
Councilmember Rayum.
I have a question for the city attorney. Will ask for it. No one has to give us anything, do they?
That's correct.
Would you like to speak to the amending motion?
I will not be supporting the amending motion. I think if we ask for this document, or a document, a number of times, we're going to get a document a number of times. I think we're going to get the information that we need by the date signed on that document, and by whomever is signing it. I don't think we need to go to specific individuals to ask. I'm not sure legally what they're capable of doing. They can just deny it to us, and we'd be in the same position. We do have an investigation going on right now, there's asking for the same document, trying to get the same information we're all trying to get. I think we need to get as much information about the said document as possible, for transparency's sake, and to make sure that everything has been done correctly. I'm not saying it hasn't, I'm just saying I'd like to sure look. So I will not be supporting the amending document, or amending...
All right. I won't be supporting the amending motion. I think two asks is enough, that we're doing our due diligence, we're, we're asking through an investigation, we're asking of the Richards. I think we're, we're working hard enough on this. So to vote on the amending motion is to request that the purchase and sale agreement of Mayor Freed regarding the Wayne back nine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? The motion fails with councilmember Evans, deputy mayor Spivey, and councilmember Rayum in the negative. So that takes us to the main motion, which is to direct the city manager to request the binding agreement, binding agreement, purchase and sale agreement, right to first purchase, or other applicable agreement for the Wayne Golf Course back nine, as described in the mayor's March 4, 2015 letter, for the purposes of verifying that the conditions of section 17 of the 1996 conservation easement have been met. That was moved by councilmember Sandberg, and seconded by councilmember Rayum. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, four to one, with councilmember Evans in the negative. Also, for the record, on these last two votes, both Mayor Freed and councilmember Lamb were absent and excused. All right, we are at 8:29, and we will be taking our, or 8:20, 8:29, or 8:30, we'll be, 8:30, we will be taking a short recess, and be back at 8:45.